So I was still grateful that we could use the March 3 work session to really talk through the substance of this particular ordinance. Tonight, I'm going to use the same slides, but I trimmed, so hopefully it won't take too, too long. So, oh, well, it would help. Sorry. There we go. So, of course, you know, the first question is, why are we doing this? And there's a few reasons why we brought forward standards for artificial turf. Currently, it's prohibited in the Community Development Code, which requires live, live plant materials. But of course, after various work sessions with council and others, we were directed to bring forward an ordinance that would permit it. What's proposed, I would say, is the best possible ordinance that allows the use of artificial turf for both residential and commercial properties, while also balancing, you know, how to handle adjacent properties, dealing with stormwater issues, just in making sure that we're still maintaining the aesthetic. That's, you know, part of, a big part of our code and the way we've evolved since it was adopted in 99. So I've mentioned, we've spoken with a lot of different people in developing this ordinance. In particular, I would highlight that we spoke with Tampa, who had already been working on something similarly. They did not choose to codify things, and I think in their implementation, that's been more challenging. So that also helped us, of course, learning from people's successes and lack of successes. We've also worked with our several people in the industry, and I'm really grateful to them for their responsiveness and helping educate us as well, and listening to us ask our questions and express our concerns. And then, of course, the Community Development Board provided very good feedback during the work sessions that we had with them. So it's really been quite a momentous effort to get here, but here we are. So similarly to work session, I'm going to call out the pages of the ordinance, just so if you need to look at where I'm specifically talking about, or for people who are following along in other ways. So the first provision, this is found at the bottom of page three of the ordinance, creates a new section 3-1202A4. The new language establishes that a residential landscaped area requirement will be, will be in effect. That says residential properties must use live plant materials to landscape 25% of the front yard. This would apply to new construction for attached or detached dwellings, or when improvements are proposed in the front yard of a residentially zoned property, and then, of course, for any property proposing a new installation, or repair, or replacement of existing artificial turf. The graphic is, that shown on the screen, is one of many graphics that are proposed within the ordinance, help kind of, to help show what is a front yard, because if you have multiple streets surrounding your, your house, it's sometimes a little tricky to figure out what it would be applied to, but anything between the principal structure and the street is a front yard. Then you get into the meat of the ordinance, which is section, a new section 3-1203. This begins on the top of page nine. First, there's general location, and general and location standards, which are found in that section, and at the top of page 10. The proposed regulations would allow the use of artificial turf citywide with, through the approval of a building permit. The proposed required residential area, of course, would not be allowed to have artificial turf. A permit would not be required to install artificial turf on permitted concrete patios, roofs. I think I touched on this. It seems relatively self-explanatory, but when going through this effort, we wanted to make sure everything was clear to, to future users who, who would be accessing the code. And then the city engineer would need to approve any potential installations within the public right-of-way or in drainage easements, and that's in part to protect all the infrastructure that's in there. Next, there's proposed design standards that ensure quality artificial turf is installed. This is found, again, on the top of page 10, in a new subsection C. Artificial turf is required to be green with lifelike blades. An exception is provided to parks and recreation facilities, as well as athletic fields, which can use the shorter blades, and they can use, utilize colored artificial turf as part of their design. There are standards for pile height and face weight that differ, whether it be a residential installation, or commercial, or non-residential installation. These are proposed so that residential areas can utilize more natural-looking products, where higher-traffic areas may use different products, and that would be more appropriate in a non-residential installation. For safety and longevity, all artificial turf must be flame retardant, free of lead and PFAS, and provide a minimum of eight years' manufacturing warranty. Procedurally, as I've mentioned, an artificial turf application would be processed as a building permit. It would be reviewed by city staff and our land resources, development review, and engineering for compliance with the code and installation standards. This is a new subsection D, found on page 10. The planning and development department would create an application that spells out the different submittal requirements, but it's our intention to require a landscape plan or survey, a tree preservation plan, if required, if there's trees in the vicinity that would be impacted, a scaled edge detail or cross-section, that's an illustration of one on the slide, and then the manufacturer specifications, including installation instructions and warranty. So the permit may be issued to a general contractor, a professional artificial turf installer, or a homeowner. And that would move us into the installation and maintenance standards. Those are on pages 10 and 11. Artificial turf installation is similar to a driveway. That's the best example, I think, that we've used on that, because there's excavation required, and that's why some of these other standards are in place. So a tree preservation plan would be required if there's trees on the property or in the vicinity within a certain distance, and that will allow our land development arborists to, to review it in advance of any permits being issued and make sure that preservation is being done. Perviousness is addressed under provisions 11 and 12, which is found on page 11. For the artificial turf installation to be found pervious, we are proposing that, that require, that the code requires, or that we require, an artificial turf installer or a licensed contractor to do the installation, and that's because there are many layers and sub-areas and, you know, excavation required, and to get it right, to maintain that perviousness over time, we feel that there's a lot more to it than kind of a typical yard work project. If a homeowner were, were to want to do their own installation, that's fine, it just would not be otherwise classified as pervious, and so your impervious ratio would, impervious surface ratio would, so they may not be able to do their full yard. There would be some mathematical calculations involved, but it doesn't prohibit that from taking place. The remaining installation standards are proposed to ensure quality installation, provide proper barriers between the artificial turf and adjacent landscaping beds or neighborhood properties, and limiting the infill used to a silica sand or a sand-based product. And of course, the athletic fields, parks and rec, they could use the, the crumb rubber infill, although over time, and we, we see that that's being phased out for those applications as well, but for now, that is still the standard. Staff is proposing to, a process that would limit the number of inspections to allow installation of artificial turf to be completed without interruption after the permit's been issued. So what this means is after installation, the, whoever did the installing, they should be taking photos of each layer as it's put in, and we would validate by that through our final inspection. And then they would provide any of the other required documentation. Just because we don't necessarily set up repeat inspections doesn't mean that we're not out looking at things to make sure that they're properly maintained. So our code compliance team would still be, you know, looking at property maintenance, and we wanted to provide some information within the code as to what maintenance actually would require. The proposal is, wait, did I skip, I think I skipped a page, I apologize. So, I mean, from the, from that perspective, it's, it's, you know, is it clean of rip tears phrase, you know, smells, there's always the need to pull weeds out of it, other debris, making sure it's not, ruts aren't starting to form. So code compliance will monitor that like they do any other yard with natural turf. If it does become damaged or fall into disrepair, then they would need to, to fix that, and there's some provisions in the code specifically addressing how that would be handled, and it would require a permit. If it was installed in a manner that was not consistent with the code initially, if it's a pre-existing installation currently, and something needed to be repaired, we would work with the property owner to get it compliant with the code to the greatest extent practicable. That's how we work with the majority of our property owners who, who were developed prior to 1999, or prior to other sections of the code coming into effect. So that's my transition into, or segue into, how are we going to handle the groups that have already installed artificial turf? So the proposal is to allow it to be installed, if it was installed prior to the enactment date of this ordinance, so that would be your next meeting, assuming that everything is approved. If, they would, we would want them to submit verification of their date of installation through receipts or other things, other options. If it was installed in the right-of-way, then we'd need an after-the-fact right-of-way permit. Again, this allows us to do a little bit of education also, and just verifying that nothing was, nothing was inadvertently impacted, and then, of course, it has to comply with all maintenance standards going forward. So the, the goal was just to, you know, there's no way to do this equitably, because we can't see what's in backyards, things like that, so this was the, the most equitable way of kind of bringing this forward while we're changing provisions for, for new installation. And then there's a host of other small things in there, or definition changes, et cetera, that are necessary to really enact this. The, the one, I hesitate to say substantive, but one piece that is not just a definition or typo, or something like that, is that the general landscaping standards are being updated to specifically call out a requirement for existing single-family or two-family lots, to come into full compliance with the tree requirements, when in addition or improvement to the lot is made. And that's because the, the bulk of the landscaping standards really apply to our, our non-residential properties, single-family homes, two-family homes, that, that type. The only provision in all of Division 12 up until now, that applies to them, is the minimum tree requirements, and sometimes it's not clear when they should try to work to come into compliance, so this gives a little bit more clarity for our reviewers, for property owners, and the like. So this did go to the Community Development Board, and on January 21, and they recommended approval with one modification, and they provided two considerations, which are provided The version of the ordinance that's presented here is, does incorporate the first recommendation, which is to clarify the applicability of what we call the 25% rule. This is that threshold that if you're making improvements to your property, and it's based on the value of your property, if it exceeds 25% of the value of the principal structure rather, then it needs to come into compliance with, I just say generically, our parking and landscaping standards to the greatest extent practicable. And so this, this clarifies that, that that is, that, sorry, this, this provided some clarification, so that came up during the conversation with the Community Development Board. During that time, they were also discussing, but it did not come forward in a motion, asking us to, to include that you could use an independent appraisal to determine that value. So that's proposed as well in here, while it was in a motion, it made sense, and it is what we have in other portions of the code, so it gets more consistency across different sections. As I mentioned at the work session, and as shown here, staff does not recommend changes to the ordinance, proposed ordinance related to the two considerations. The proposed ordinance would, is, what is proposed is to prohibit the use of artificial turf in parking lot landscape islands. At the Community Development Board meeting, there was a lot of discussion regarding a very specific property that had used this, and while the board agreed that the, this particular parking lot was improved, and by that, they, they encouraged us to look to see if there was a good ratio, like 75% could be artificial turf, or something like that. I, they didn't recommend bringing anything forward related to that, because this is one of the limited places where we get that additional aesthetic in our, in our asphalt areas, right? The, the code, the general purposes of the code address the importance of beautification and aesthetics, and in, in these areas, this is our limited area to do that. So that is why we're proposing to not otherwise allow artificial turf. Any, any that exists now would be covered by the other provision. The second was to consider licensure requirements for professional installers, and our recommendation was just to allow us to address this through the application process. We can get some sort of verification, you know, some proof of evidence that they've installed it. You know, my thought is manufacturers, train people, they're not going to let people install their products in a way that's not consistent with their, their materials, and this would allow us the opportunity to, to tweak if, you know, the first few applications come through and we're not quite getting what we need, or we're not comfortable, then we can do those modifications while still keeping within the intent of, of the code. So the last thing before I close is, there was, questions came up at work session regarding the disposal of artificial turf. Some artificial turf is recyclable. I worked with solid waste, they confirmed that the product is accepted for just plain disposal, at both, at both of the city's disposal sites, which would be the county's waste-to-energy plants, as well as Angelo's, which is a service we use. Since, since we've shaped this ordinance to treat the installation of artificial turf more as a construction project, requiring permits, staff's recommendation is to, to just leave it and handle that again through our permitting process, which would be for construction projects, typically the, the contractor has to dispose of their own product, so that could involve needing the use of a dumpster. Just keeping consistent with how we treat other construction projects, so not adding any other recommendations related to that. And with that, I can answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Do we have a reading?
We have ordinance number 9805-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, making amendments to the Community Development Code by amending Article III Development Standards, Division 12, Landscaping Tree Protection, Division 14, Parking and Loading, and Division 15, Property Maintenance Standards, by amending Article VIII, Definitions and Rules of Construction, Section 8-102, Definitions, by amending Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, Rates, and Charges, Section V, Building and Building Regulations, by amending Appendix B, U.S. 19 Zoning District and Development Standards, Division V, Site Design Standards, Certifying Consistency with the City's Comprehensive Plan and Proper Advertisement, Providing for Separability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Is anyone here from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.1?
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm Glenna Wentworth, and I want to just take this opportunity to thank you all. You know I'm on the Environmental Advisory Board, and I want to thank you for supporting, reinstating me for a second, a term on that board. So from an environmental standpoint, I must oppose any change in code that allows for artificial turf. I'm unclear how allowing artificial turf can contribute to our strategic priorities of environmental stewardship or community well-being. Compared to natural grass, which I'm not that fond of either, but it is, artificial turf does not clean the air, it does not cool the air, it does the opposite. And regarding stormwater runoff, artificial turf cannot, no matter how permeable it is, absorb as much rainwater as natural grass. As someone who has experienced serious flooding in my neighborhood for the first time this fall, this does not make sense. It certainly does not make sense to allow artificial turf in any areas that are flood zones. The Florida Friendly Landscaping Program, which Green Print 2.0 and Pinellas County have embraced, does not consider artificial turf to be a Florida-friendly product. Their primary concerns are that artificial turf is a petroleum-based product, it can reduce groundwater recharge, it can reduce wildlife habitat, and it can increase local heat and glare. In 2016, the entire coast of Florida was designated a global biodiversity hotspot, one of 16 in the world. To qualify, at least 70% of your wildlife habitat has to be lost, usually to development. But this trend can be reversed by planting native plants in our yards and gardens, installing pollinator gardens, installing water gardens. England brought back the biodiversity of their bird population by doing this very thing. Despite their development, they took, they took advantage of the green spaces around their homes. This is a trend we should be following. But artificial turf, on the other hand, is a dead zone for wildlife, above, above ground and possibly below ground, depending on how compacted the soil becomes. And the final deal breaker for me is disposal. And I didn't hear all this well, what, what solid waste said, but when artificial turf ages out at 12 or 15 years, all of that petroleum product will end up in our landfill, because there is no place in this state where it can be recycled. Very few places, actually, anywhere in the country. So I hope you keep some of these concerns in mind when you make this decision, and thank you for your time.
I like this so much better when they speak after the topic. That way you're not having to do all your agenda items.
Good evening, council. I'm Bill Johnson. I reviewed this ordinance in detail this morning, and sent some questions to Ms. Matsky. I got a response to that email, that she was out of the office and would not be available today. It did suggest Ms. Nancy Gardner, so I forwarded my questions to her. However, I did not get a response in, from anybody, so I must bring my questions up. And I'm giving you a copy of the email that I sent in today. First, I question the adequacy of the public notice to not be highlighting that this was dealing with artificial turf as the, as a prime entity in the change of the ordinance. Of special concern to me is the absence of the requirement that inspection of the ongoing maintenance is required. Currently, the ordinance just says at installation. Existing landscape code enforcement has not and is not a proactive, being proactively enforced today. If this is adopted and not in ongoing enforcement done, it will further our city's decline into mediocrity. There was a comment by Ms. Matsky about enforcement. I'm not sure I totally understood it, but in, I think that enforcement, ongoing enforcement should be written into this ordinance, so that we make sure that it is being done, and that's a directive to the, to the code enforcement staff. Thank you very much. Hope you'll look at these comments, perhaps incorporate some of the modifications before second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here from the public that desires to speak to this agenda?
I'm Mr. Haluba. I don't know that there's an issue of enforcement. I don't think the city of Clearwater does a very good job of code enforcement. In fact, I may be under the wrong impression that there has to be a complaint before any code enforcement is initiated. But as far as artificial turf goes, I think planting grass or using pea gravel is a much better alternative.
Oh, that was short-sighted to the point. We like commenters like that.
Good evening, Mayor Rettger, members of the council, the senior staff. I'll bring my card over, I don't have one, so I think you know who I am. I'm Dennis McDermott, I live on Lakeview Road in Clearwater. And I just want to start out with a comment that sticks with me every time I think about something, it comes from the Iroquois Nation, and one of their guiding principles, which is, the decisions we make today should result in a sustainable world, seven generations in the future. So that's sort of one of my ways of looking at things.
A good measure.
And then, then I look at, and think to myself, when I, when I read through the staff report, it recommends adopting the regulation, yet it made me think that there may be a dark force, some kind of a deep-money architect guiding this project to a foregone conclusion. And, and what I read was, staff met with the Environmental Advisory Board on September 18, 2024, to discuss the proposed amendments to the Community Development Code. Rather than allow artificial turf, the EAB recommends city council promote Florida-friendly landscaping practices, which aim to conserve water, preserve natural resources, and reduce water pollution. It goes on to say, the EAB understands the city council's interest in regulating artificial turf, while the product does not meet Green Point 2.0 standards, does not meet Florida-friendly landscaping criteria, and its environmental risks far outweigh the potential benefits. The EAB recommends the city council demand the highest possible standards, including ensuring any artificial turf is PFAS-free and recyclable should ordinance be adopted. And then on page three of the staff report, it says, in May 2023, the city code compliance division began issuing citations for properties where artificial turf had been installed illegally. After receiving these citations, property owners brought concerns to the attention of city council. And it's my recollection that a relatively small number of citations were issued, primarily to property owners and island estates, which itself was created in the 1950s through dredging, and is, is just a series of man-made spoiled islands at or near sea level. And it strikes me that the last place we should be creating permeability barriers is on, is on spoiled islands.
I did get your email antics.
Add to that, the amount of solar radiation captured by plastic lawns, and the adverse effects on nearby vegetation, ambient air temperatures, and it just seems that incorporating artificial turf into residential landscape regulation just doesn't add up. And I just, I, I just don't know what else to say. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Is anyone else here tonight from the public that desires to speak to this agenda?
No, chop, chop, suey, suey.
Here and saying none is there a council discussion?
Okay.
There's none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Undenounced. Agenda item 6.2.
They're as bad as LA, though.
I prefer the annexation of future land use map designation of residential urban RU, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 2039 Pointcetta Avenue, and pass ordinances 9814-25, 9815-25, and 9816-25 on first reading.
Good afternoon, council. Adrian Young, Plan Development, and thank you. This voluntary annexation petition is for 0.114 acres located at 2039 Pointcetta Avenue. The parcel is currently occupied by a detached dwelling unit. Application is requesting annexation order to receive sanitary sewer services from the city. Staff analysis concludes that this annexation petition is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Community Development Code, as detailed in the memo, and recommends approval. Any questions?
No. We have to get to 6.3.
Mayor, we have three ordinances associated. First up is ordinance number 9814-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the east side of Pointcetta Avenue, approximately 50 feet north of Idlewild Drive, whose post office address is 2039 Pointcetta Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up is ordinance number 9815-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the east side of Pointcetta Avenue, approximately 50 feet north of Idlewild Drive, whose post office address is 2039 Pointcetta Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential urban RU, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9816-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the east side of Pointcetta Avenue, approximately 50 feet north of Idlewild Drive, whose post office address is 2039 Pointcetta Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Is there one, anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to the Agenda Item 6.2? If there's none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Can you guys hear this okay for this next item?
I approve the right-of-way vacation request from the Church of Scientology Flag Service Organization to vacate the southern portion of South Garden Avenue between Court Street and Franklin Street as owned and fee simple by the City of Clearwater and recorded in Plan Book 5, page 53 of the Public Records of Pinellas County and pass ordinance 9812-25 on first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to take a moment to provide some context ahead of the discussion on this item. Given the complexity and the sensitivity of these negotiations, if you would please allow me to provide some background on the steps that got us here today.
Please.
As you may know, the Church of Scientology has been planning for several years to build a large event hall on the property just south of the flag building. As part of the project approval process in December, they submitted a vacation right-of-way for a one-block portion of Garden Avenue. The city is required to respond to that vacation request. Upon review by legal, it was determined that by operation of law, the city has title to that parcel. And so in order, if the council chooses to vacate that right-of-way, the city would have to sell or trade the property that is reflective of market value. The city is also required to post that property for 30 days to determine if any other interest exists. As such, the council unanimously directed that I engage in negotiations with the Church of Scientology regarding the purchase and sale of this portion of Garden Avenue. Since then, I've been working individually with the council to seek their input and learn their priorities before opening negotiations. During the negotiations, I advocated for the priorities of every council member. Unfortunately, the Church of Scientology did not agree to all of those priorities. Given the historical and community interests surrounding this issue, we anticipated a range of perspectives and opinions and challenges brought forth by both the community and the council as to what an appropriate deal would look like. What is being brought forward today is a result of those negotiations. This agreement meets the majority of the goal set by the council. It provides a city a fair market price as validated by the three appraisals the city received for this property. It creates new green space that will be open to the public, and the property will not exchange ownership until the building is completed. I will now turn this over to Tom Mahoney, who will provide the staff report. And then after that, we look forward to taking council's questions and discussion on this matter, and then ultimately council's decision.
Good evening, Council. Tom Mahoney, Public Works Department. So this is for the right-of-way vacation of a portion of Garden Avenue located between Franklin and Court Street. This will enable the future development, as our city manager said, of the performance hall and an entry plaza. This was reviewed by staff, and we will be retaining some easements necessary to cover our utilities until such time they potentially get relocated or remain where they're at, but we will have easements covering our interests. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Reading.
Mayor, I can read that first, if you like. Ordinance number 9812-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, conditionally vacating all of the right-of-way of South Garden Avenue, abutting lots 6 through 11, together with that portion abutting the vacated 15-foot alley lying between lots 10 and 11 of Court Square subdivision, as recorded in Plan Book 5, page 53 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing for conditions precedent to said vacation, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to item 6.3 on the agenda? Please, please just line up here to the to my right. Yeah, one at a time. Thank you.
I really don't have a lot to add to what I mean to people, long line of people are going to say, but I want to appreciate, I do appreciate those of you who responded to my concerns by email this last week. But I have to tell you that a couple of the responses sounded like talking points directly from the Church of Scientology. And I just feel like that this is a, I've lived in this area in Clearwater longer than all of you probably have been alive, and I've seen a dynamic downtown. I've seen areas, cities who went into kind of sleazy situations and have been brought back, but not Clearwater. There's only one reason why it hasn't come back. You walk up and down the street, all the storefronts are empty. There's nothing here for anybody to come and enjoy.
Yes, ma'am.
It's really a shame.
Yes, ma'am.
And I feel like that by doing approving this vacation of this street is just another way to allow Scientologists to keep their stranglehold in our city. What's to stop them from deciding they want part of Cleveland Street because they own everything on either side? What's to stop Osceola from becoming vacated for the right price? And I really hope that you all will consider the future of what Clearwater downtown could be if we can turn this around. So I ask you, please, not to vote for this vacation. Thanks.
Yay. Good job. Good job, lady. We don't know who she is.
Christine Abadi? Is she here? No?
Oh, I think she was here for two.
Okay. No, he's asking for more point for more time. I'm sorry. Karen Cunningham? Rudy Michaelak? Okay. All right. So you have four minutes, Mr. Bunker.
Thank you.
Nice.
Mark Bunker. The loss of a block-long city street will not hurt Clearwater. The construction of a large L. Ron Hubbard Hall will. Hubbard's unfortunate choice of Clearwater back in 1975 was the moment when our downtown's fate was doomed. It has been radioactive ever since. Covert operations against the city, the mayor, the newspaper, and the U.S. government sent L. Ron Hubbard's wife and 10 other Scientology officials to jail in the late '70s, and Hubbard himself went into hiding for the rest of his life, not so very different from how David Miscavige hides from subpoenas today. When the city wanted to move the aquarium downtown, Scientology worked hard to stop that. Miscavige didn't want strangers in his backyard, but he sure wanted that property. And and that, when he didn't get it, he orchestrated this scheme to purchase all the remaining property downtown while lying about it the entire time.
Yes, he did.
Now Miscavige wants you to trust that he is a man of his words. He is not. A man of his words would not treat the city this way. It may not be possible to stop the construction of the L. Ron Hubbard Hall, a monument to the biggest humbug of the 20th century, but you don't have to make it easy. Hold off on selling the street until Miscavige comes through with everything he promised. Three buildings being renovated downtown doesn't begin to match what Miscavige promised you, and that is a drop in the bucket. That's pocket change for Miscavige. Miscavige tells you he wants a vibrant downtown for his people. His people have been flying in from around the world for decades, spending all their time and money inside Scientology's properties. They promised there'd be tens of thousands of people coming to the streets. There have not been. All of these people have been coming here. The downtown's dead. In 1998, when ground was broken on the flag building, the city was told that would bring tens of thousands of people here. It did not. Miscavige didn't even throw his support behind the bluff property referendum because he didn't care about what happens to the downtown or what the city wants. I urge you to hold on to the street. It may be the only chip you have left. If you do give Miscavige what he wants, at the very least, rename Franklin Street Lisa McPherson Way in her honor. Give that hall an address that will stand as a true reminder of Scientology's legacy in this city. Thanks. And I know you're under no obligation to answer any questions, but I know our wonderful city attorney, David Margolis, crafted something that I'm sure is filled with all sorts of safeguards. I'd like to hear about some of those, if you don't mind, to make sure that Miscavige holds up his end of the bargain. Would that be possible? Oh, apparently it's not. Okay.
We're going to have a discussion, Mark, after this.
All right. All right. Okay. Well, I'm glad that you care about what the citizens are concerned about enough to not answer questions.
Tell him, Mark. Tell him. Tell him why he's here, man. You can tell he's pissed.
Karen Cunningham. I'm going to make this very brief. I'm not going to even go into whether I think the merits are or not in this situation, but I just want to say that piecemealing things, you know, negotiating one thing and another thing, it doesn't work. I think we have to make a good package. And I don't, I hope we're not done with negotiations for the downtown and how invigorated, but I think every little piece is going to count. So I would like to see this not taken up right now. Thank you.
Very nice, lady. Very nice. Yes. Stall it. Thank you. I think we should sell it. Got to have a bootlicker.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Sori Love, and I know many of you on the dais. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the Clearwater African American Foundation, and our purpose and our mission is to honor, promote, memorialize African American landmarks, foundations, and land sites. Back in the day, Garden Avenue was one of three major African American communities here in Clearwater. There was Garden Avenue, North Greenwood, and the Mac Dixon subdivision. And the North Greenwood area, excuse me, the Mac Dixon area, excuse me again, the Garden Avenue area is the last of the three main communities that's just kind of laying there with very little happening. And that is one of the areas where there was, at one time, Bee's Catering. Ms. Minnie Kerbo, who was my preschool teacher, she taught many students in her home on Garden Avenue. I'm working with the Clearwater Historical Society, and Allison did mention that I was honored to be one of the 2024 Trailblazers last year. That's okay, our forgiver. And it is, it will be an honor if you would hold off approving this amendment, referendum of whatever it's called.
My apologies, ma'am.
To really look at what can you do in the reimagining of Clearwater's African American history to put aside something in your memory or your mind or in your referendum to honor and memorialize the African American presence that was once thriving on Garden Avenue? And those are my suggestions for the Garden Avenue referendum. Thank you.
So sorry that I called you a bootlicker. I am so sorry. I should never have assumed that. Yep, they are still talking about it, Amy.
Mike Masters Sari of City of Clearwater. I live in Clearwater. Most of you all know me. I'm going to first read a couple quotations. One is from Mr. Allbritton. "I think we ought to be talking about this publicly on the dais as a regular talk," Council Member Dave Allbritton responded. The next one was, "One of you four men, we are at a point where we need to start bringing the public along with us to have these discussions in the sunshine so that we all have, we are on the same page." And he asks, "Supposedly, we all want the same thing, right? We want a vibrant, alive downtown. So if we want the same thing, where is the disconnect?" You figure out which one of you four said that. Okay. Next thing is, Jennifer's just stated that they are not in agreement with what you want. They are, they don't want to give you everything that you want. So that doesn't mean there should be a deal.
We don't know, Amy.
Now go a couple of steps further. And first of all, I appreciate every one of you's. I never thought I'd have to be up here even discussing this, but we are. Ryan sent me an answer back about parks, and he said it's going to make a nice park for the public, all the public to enjoy. The public's going to look at 21 precepts of L. Ron Hubbard. That's what's going to be in that so-called park. There's a park right now between South Fort Harrison Hotel and the county building. Have any of yous ever been in that park? How many citizens do you think have ever been in that park?
None. They're not allowed.
The L. Ron Hubbard Hall membership, their reason for doing, expanding their reach into our society. The reason I became a member of the L. Ron Hubbard Hall was I can see my job as a Scientologist to comfort and monitor the insanity of the world at large. We ought to all give up our own churches and go be part of this. We're insane if we don't. I stay on top of what's happening in the world, and I ask myself, what can I actually do about it? The answer is always, support the only entity that can bring sanity to this planet. And Scientology came to downtown 1975. It brought a hotel and wrote plans to take over control of the city. That's called Project Normandy. Do your homework. And it was true. And Mark said people did go to jail. And then in speaking, and it came sneaking into town, a religion with beliefs and practices alien to the teachings of Jesus that preached in Clearwater Christian churches, so different from the law of the prophets that are taught in city synagogues, the law of God of Israel, thou shalt not steal. And then there was other things that went on, but I'm going to close with, "This vote may seem insignificant in the world's view since it's a small right-of-way. This is the defining moment in your elected office. The vote is about principle."
Thank you.
Right on, dude. Right on.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lola Wikenboard, and I'm not comfortable behind the mic. I give the mic to all you guys. But anyway, the gentleman that used to be an ex-councilman, I did have the pleasure of telling him he could not badger Scientology on the radio station without giving them equal time. And the lady that was there, I don't know if she knows Trailblazers, but Wanda McCawthon and Chip Collins have been on the radio over 40 years. Scientology, they are religious people. They do their shows on religion. Scientology does not bother them, ever. And to all the people here, I was here probably 30 years ago for St. Patrick's Day, helping Josie paint her building purple. But anyway, this town, I've been here 37 years, and I'm not comfortable hiding the mic. My husband was, my mentor was, but they've all died. So I'm here, and the progress that has been done here with Scientology, if you remember the Fort Harrison, the old gray moss building, everything was awful. It was awful. I hope the people who reject this go to Rome and see that the Vatican is there. Rome flourishes. All the hotels, all the restaurants around there flourish. Clearwater, I wish, would be like Rome. This is for progress. If you've ever been down Garden Street, it goes from nowhere to nowhere. The old Jiffy Building used to be there. I used to go there for printing. There is nothing there. Nothing. And if you're trying to take Garden down to get to Clearwater Beach, it doesn't have a light. And if you think one person will let you in, they won't. They won't. The auditorium will bring people here in two years. We're not going to have the courts downtown. We're not going to have the Pinellas County buildings downtown. It will be all empty. This will bring tourists from all over, from all over, and we need And if you're trying to take Garden down to get to Clearwater Beach, it doesn't have a light. And if you think one person will let you in, they won't. They won't. The auditorium will bring people here in two years. We're not going to have the courts downtown. We're not going to have the Pennebys County buildings downtown. It will be all empty. This will bring tourists from all over, from all over, and we need to get downtown back again. And these people will come here for this function.
Right, and you said that, Amy. Vatican City.
But all people, they eat, they drink, they party, they will do good things for downtown Clearwater. I have been to restaurants, and they have been against Scientology. And I said, Danny, before you say one more thing, I can point to 10 Scientologists here. They support the city. And I just would like you to sign this. Let's all get along and bring prosperity to Clearwater.
Let's all get along and hold hands.
Next speaker.
Not my kind of hands.
Robert? Okay, so you have four minutes.
Well, today, represent my three businesses here with Rob. We're representing our 500 block. Today, we stand at a crossroads. We stand here not to discuss the street or to debate policies, but to decide what Clearwater is and who it belongs to. For too long, the city has been shaped by hidden hands, silent deals, and the system that thrives on secrecy. It has been shaped by those who do not build but hoard, by those who do not uplift but control, by those who do not serve but rule in the shadows. And yet, we've allowed it. We've accepted stagnation. We have let those with power convince us that they are untouchable. Our voices tell us that our voices do not matter, that we should simply just accept what we are given. But that ends today because I know what Clearwater can truly be. This past Saturday was proof of an undeniable future. Clearwater can thrive. We can bring it back together. We can give them a reason to come together. We can fight and make it worth, a place worth traveling to. It could become alive, not because of policies. This didn't happen because of policies or false promises, but it happened because of us, the builders, the workers, the entrepreneurs, the families, and the people of Clearwater. Clearwater does not belong to those who cling to power out of fear. Clearwater does not belong to those who operate in silence and control people through illusions. Clearwater belongs to those who refuse to be ruled.
Giving me chills.
And that means every single person in Clearwater. That does not mean someone of one faith or another, their past or their affiliations. We all have to make a choice. To those, to the members of Scientology, the Church of Scientology, I speak directly to you. You are part of our city. You have built it with us. You invested here, and you've called Clearwater home. But home is not to be controlled. Home is not to be ruled by fear. Home is not to be silenced in the corner. So today, I invite you, not as enemies, not as an opponent, and not as an opposition, but as a neighbor, to stand with us, to reject secrecy, to reject division, to reject the unseen hand that dictates our futures, our futures. If you truly love Clearwater, I say stand with us, the people of Clearwater who want development for downtown, to the city council, to the votes that matter, for I'm just a voice here in silence. You know what I mean. I've sat here in private meetings and meetings with you. Some of you might not like the way I express myself, but believe me, I express the truth. You have used my own, my own work to validate your stagnation, to justify inaction, to convince yourselves that Clearwater somehow has already progressed. But we, but what we have built is proof of its possibility. It's not proof that we should stop fighting or stop growing. Today, we must decide whether we serve the people of Clearwater, the ones who have long held, or the ones who have long held power in their grasp. There is no neutral ground here. You either vote for the people, for unity, for transparency, or you vote to sell what was never yours to give away. Choose carefully, because the truth is, I won't give up. I'm not going to stop. I'm going to build this town the best I could, like I promised you guys that one day. And I think together, we can build this town, and that means with everyone. Believe me when I say, it's coming, there's a turning point, and we can do this together. But this has to be voted no. Thank you.
Right on, dude. Right on.
Next speaker.
Honorable mayor and council members, this is the second time, this is, I'm bringing a record here, speaking twice to council, to councilmen. Since I heard about this proposed sale for our garden, South Garden Avenue, I've been thinking about it for the last couple of weeks. It seems like this is going to be a permanent blockage of the street, basically eliminating a street in our downtown, and my concern is accessibility to downtown. Due to Coachman Park and the Sound, I believe downtown is coming back. Just as, just in my personal experience in the last four months, my husband and I have brought our kids and our grandkids to a concert at the Sound. Actually, within the last six months, almost all of my extended family has been to a concert at the Sound, and most of them live in Tampa. On one occasion, we just brought the grandkids back to play at the playground at Coachman Park because they didn't have enough time the first time. When we were playing at that playground, we saw young people, 20-somethings, coming from all directions, heading to the Sound to hear the band that night. I've never seen so many young people downtown. Our visits have also prompted us to try two new restaurants downtown, and they were quite good. Three years ago, this would never happen. I understand that there will be more shows at the Sound this year than last year. Also, if a nationally known museum comes to the main library, this will give people even more reason to come downtown. South Garden Street may be a quiet street now, but what will it look like a year or two from now as traffic increases? Is it short-sighted to sell off an access route to downtown now? These are my concerns. Downtown is everybody's downtown. Let's make sure it's accessible to all. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker.
Was she for it or against it? Definite trouble source. I bet you you're really missing being there.
My name's Jim MacArthur. My name's Jim MacArthur. I live here. I'm a real estate investor and developer. I'm familiar with a lot of the things that go on in downtowns in a lot of the cities, not just here, but in the, all over the country. For instance, my office is in, one of my offices is in downtown St. Pete. And new development in cities is always a good thing. New construction brings jobs. New buildings bring the property taxes and values up. And anytime that you've got an opportunity to put something like this on the map that brings people in from all over the world, it's always good for the community and obviously revenue for the businesses. Maybe the downtown's just one of the things that might be affected by one street, but I believe the economic impact is what I'm more interested in as somebody that lives here, because I've seen the impact of, you know, the things that Scientology's done. I know people are, you know, pro or con against it. I'm not either way, but I'm more interested in speaking about the economic impact. And I don't know that there's anything negative about that. Potentially, my understanding is the building of that hall might be several hundred million dollars just in itself, and all of that is, there's a trickle-down effect with everybody in the community, right? And interesting enough, the artificial turf, you know, comments earlier, the biggest buyer of artificial turf in the world is in downtown Clearwater, sports facilities companies. So the biggest guys in the world on this particular topic are here, and people like the L. Ron Hall, I'm going to say I think it's a positive thing. I think it's going to bring a lot of money to the city. Downtowns, as a rule, the way things have gone in the past decades, you know, people have moved to the suburbs, and downtown suffered. I remember when St. Petersburg was the same. You know, it was, it was a ghost town. The stores were empty. There was no value there. Now, it's a completely different world. I'm involved in real estate and real estate investing, and some of the properties that we have have gone up a million dollars a year, and that reflects on the value that you people and the county get on tax value and all the rest of it, right? And now, there are businesses that are flourishing, whereas before, they weren't, you know. And I'll look at the economic side because everybody's always going to be on the political side, one side or the other, but I think there's positive benefit. And I think there's positive benefit on the trickle-down effect of everybody, the new buildings downtown. It never hurts. It's always a positive thing. And I don't know all the details, but I do know it'll bring eventually probably a billion dollars to the community.
Your time's up, buddy. Thank you.
Take a hike.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Good to see everybody. Mayor, I want to tell you how much, how proud I am of you and your team. I've written letters to many of you over the past couple of years. From my viewpoint, what you've done downtown is fantastic. My cardiologist is thrilled to hear that I'm still walking, trying to walk at Crest Lake Park. So I've been here a long time. I married into the Turner family. That's why I've been here a long time. I'm speaking in support of Agenda, Agenda Item 6.3. I think it's a good idea. As some of you know, I'm the owner of Veterans Funeral Care in Clearwater, Florida. I would like to say, because this is an issue involving the church, you are looking at a Billy Graham Baptist. We are, my family attends Calvary Baptist. My son is getting his graduate degree at the Southern Baptist Seminary in Louisville. So he and I had a talk about this, and he said, Dad, you know, you can't be a missionary without, first, you got to meet people in order to affect their life. So good lesson, son. Thank you. So what I wanted you to know is, just this year, my company has a 501(c)(3) charity called Operation Toy Soldier. Every year, we do 4,000 or 5,000 toys over at MacDill Air Force Base. I don't like to talk about it, but I am a DOD contractor, and I do have the contract for Central Command, Special Operations Command at MacDill Air Force Base. This year, because of the hurricane, we were in big trouble. They're expecting us to show up with our, with our normal. By the way, when we do this, this toy drive, we do it anonymously, and it truly doesn't matter what, what E2s and E3s think about or know who I am. It simply doesn't matter. So we did, because we got a problem, we put a Facebook post out there saying, hey, we need help, money, donations, whatever we can do, because we're still trying to take care of the military kids in Tampa. Well, the Clearwater community volunteers reached out to me, didn't know who they were, offered, later told me who they were, but donated 1,000-plus toys. And because of them and other, a lot of other people, we got over the hump, and we still did about 4,000 toys. So I'm also a member of the Bay Pines Board, I don't want to go on and on with this, but Tampa Bay Veterans Alliance. And, you know, for years, I should be, it should be said, they have done a, the Scientology has done a banquet for our Purple Heart recipients. I'm a paratrooper, son. I was raised in an army family. I can only judge, you know, what I see. So this, this year, last year, I see these people pitching in, trying to, trying to help, and my three minutes is up. Thank you all. I appreciate what all of you do.
Thank you for coming out there. Next speaker.
I used to be a landlord in downtown Clearwater for 35 years. I know downtown Clearwater. I was working very hard to succeed downtown Clearwater. And I suffered many times. One of the city hall people take wrong decisions against me. And finally, I left. And I feel happy, and I feel disappointed, I feel angry, and that's why I don't see me for 10 years to come back on this place. I just have ten who was Scientologists, were very nice, were very polite, never giving problems, never I gave them problems. They paid them, they respect me a lot more than anybody. To me, to check the people, what kind of religion they belong to is shameful, is disgrace, and not supposed to be done that way. Let's go and say if somebody was Catholic or Protestant or Jewish, they're not going to come here to deny them. I didn't like them here to support this issue, but to be justice. 35 years ago, I sent a letter to the mayor's commissioners, and I told them what's going to happen in downtown Clearwater. And I got the letter, and happened exactly what I said. When I tried to build up something downtown, it wasn't issued vacaterally. They did so many tricks to reject my project, and they done it. I didn't see lately even one train downtown to do some work. I saw many businesses, they bought for Scientologists, they renovated. And don't forget, Scientologists are people too. Don't forget that. Don't discriminate anybody. Give the opportunity to do something downtown, because what we saw late years, nothing happens.
Respect, sir.
Don't stop the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else here from the public that I desire to speak to this agenda?
Mayor and council, I'm still Bill Johnson. I hadn't intended to speak to this, but I'm really be interested in a little more transparency over some of the things that were desired from this negotiated or this partnership and were declined to be included. I'm mostly concerned about the viability of downtown and the diversity and the organic development of stores and facilities downtown. And I just would like to have some more insight into some of the conversations that we've had with, essentially, our largest property owner and their strategy. So that's my request.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this agenda?
I'm Mr. Haluba. There is a person sitting on this dais that used to work for Scientology, and I think that should not go unsaid. It is the unethical and evil personality of Daniel Slaughter.
Does anyone else here from the public desire to speak to this agenda? If there's none, is there a council discussion? Probably all of us, so let's just start on the right. Councilmember Carter.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody that's come out here today to voice your opinions, your concerns. I do hear you, and I think that we can see the broad scheme of where people are, the difference of what it's going to bring to the community with this project going forward, closing Garden. You know, from the taxpayer here, we've got a good deal, and later on, I'll come back to that, that staff has worked diligently on that protects taxpayers and business owners with certain interests that kick in for protections going forward. Not only that, we've secured commitments to revitalizing our Cleveland Street, which is our downtown and leads into the park and the Bay Care Sound. I can attest that over the last month and a half, you walk Cleveland Street, and there are buildings that are now being redone, that have building permits in them, and construction is ongoing inside it, that the paper is... and construction is ongoing inside it, that the paper is now out of the windows and things are moving. And I think that that has to, that can't go unsaid or unnoticed. That is part of that verbal commitment that was made on top of this contract. We see things happening. And until you see the rest of the, the fruits of the deal pan out, which are activating those storefronts for non-institutional use to ensure that it's going to be businesses that come in at a fair market rate to serve the downtown and the betterment of that, right? Like that's what I think we all as Clearwater Floridians are looking forward to. We have a wonderful park with a wonderful venue of which this might become a portion of it, the downtown main library, for those of you watching at home is what I'm alluding to. And I just think of 50 and 100 years from now, what are we building for Clearwater? And what can we achieve? And we, we have to work with people. I said this on my campaign is Scientology is a part of downtown. You work with them when you can and you work around them when you can't. And here staff has taken the advice of all council, brought together the first deal that I think, quite frankly, I was surprised that Scientology even signed the deal that staff was able to get and procure, especially with the, what I will call protections for taxpayers. And I'm pleased for it because it looks like the things are happening. Now, for that being said, you don't move on to anything else until you see the fruits of the labor that, that have been talked about and negotiated with, right? Seeing these storefronts come to fruition and a business come in there, right? And then hopefully thrive and add to the downtown and those other businesses that are there to collaborate and work together and all grow together for this wonderful and fantastic community that we have and we love. Not to mention, selling this property alone, it's what, a 60-foot street with 20 parking spaces that nobody uses, let's be real. And one of the citizens came up here and said, you can't get in if you're trying to go to the beach regardless. And we all know as citizens, she's right. Like traffic going to the beach during spring break or any other season, people are worried about getting to the beach and they're staying in the same traffic and it's gonna be heck trying to get in. So giving that street for, for them to build this park and this potential green space, also taking the burden off of the taxpayer to take over, take care of the infrastructure that's underneath it is another win in my mind, right? Another thing that I ran on is making sure we're not kicking the can down the road, taking care of our infrastructure and investing in the right things before the next shiny thing. And here we're finding an outside organization willing to not only pay the fair market price, give other assurances and assurances, but also take care of infrastructure that's under that area. I understand not everybody's going to be happy with this decision. I would be naive to think that everybody is 1,000% on board with that. But with, with what staff was able to, to bring to the table with working with their leadership, whoever it was, I'm very pleased with, I'm also very pleased with some of the other things that I've mentioned. And I completely agree with the other gentleman that stood up and the economic development that'll bring it just during the building process. You know, when those workers are here, the hundreds of them that'll be here, they gotta have the place to go and eat, place to go and sleep, you know, if they're being, coming in from out of, out of town or whatnot. And that's going to be your downtown restaurants. That's where they're gonna go. So I think it's a very positive thing. I think it's a step forward. It's, again, what I ran on, allowing staff to do a good job and bring a deal that's, that sounds right, that is good for the residents, the businesses of our area, that have protections that follow it and make sure things get done.
And curb your mess.
With that, I will ask Mr. Margolis, I don't know if we can, can we speak to any of the particulars of what we have with that in reference to the contract?
If the council would like.
If you could, please.
Sure. So what has been drafted and what I understand the direction to be from the manager and the council should be viewed as tentative. And the reason I say that is because under Florida law, the city is required to advertise for 30 days prior to disposing of any real estate within the community redevelopment area in which this is located. That advertisement indicates that there will be a public hearing on April 3rd as to a purchase and sale agreement if the council votes tonight to approve the ordinance on first reading. So in answering that question, I'm happy to give a tentative answer, but just understand that that is all subject to council's direction and council's discussion. And if council decides tonight that there are changes, amendments, modifications, or if council does not pass the ordinance on first reading, then all of that could be subject to change.
Absolutely.
That said, the current version of the contract, which again, subject to council's decision approval, has the purchase price that the manager has approved. I have given legal approval in as much as the city charter requires at least fair market value. I have confirmed that in fact, that would be obtained here. In fact, we would obtain more than fair market value for the purchase price.
Definitely in trouble, sir. So I think we're just all frustrated because we really want to be involved.
Second, it includes a requirement that the majority of Garden Avenue be developed as green space, as we know it is currently asphalt and parking spaces. So it would be converted at least in a majority framework to green space. Keep in mind, we do not have a final site plan from the church, so we do not know exactly how this is going to look when it's going to be done. That is not currently part of the deal. There has been a lot of discussion about that, but there is no development agreement that has been proposed. There is nothing currently on the table as it pertains to that other than the requirement that the majority of Garden Avenue be green space, which is a component of the drafted purchase and sale agreement. In addition to that, there is going to be no closing on the real estate until after building permits are obtained and after the building is substantially complete. So in other words, it's not as if the city is transferring the property upfront and then wondering what's going to happen after that. The reverse has to happen. They have to build the project first. After they build the project, the transfer of real estate will occur as drafted.
I do agree with you, Jerry.
In addition to that, there are timeframes that are put in there. Candidly, this is probably the most challenging aspect. And the reason for that is not because it's hard to draft, but because there are different perspectives among council and even within city government as to whether the underlying project is desirable or not. And so that is challenging from a drafting perspective because if the project is viewed in a favorable and desirable way, then we want the project done as quickly as possible. But if you're someone who does not care for or does not believe in the underlying project or does not believe the underlying project is beneficial for Clearwater, then your view could be exactly the opposite. So how do we draft something like that? And the answer is to come up with something in the middle which has specific timeframes in there so that everybody knows how long this is going to take at the outside, but it also creates a specific terminus point. As currently drafted, the buyer is required to obtain building permits and complete the project or substantially complete the project by the end of 2029. If they do not complete it by the end of 2029, the buyer has the option to extend the contract by making non-refundable purchase payments to the city. Those non-refundable payments are $300,000 a year and they occur in one-year increments. So in other words, if they're in the middle of construction in 2029 and then they say, hey, we've run into these issues in construction and we need another year, we need another two years, they can purchase extensions for $300,000 a year up until the end of 2033, at which time their right to purchase extensions expires. At that point, the city can withdraw from the deal if in fact the project has not been completed. So that is the framework of what has currently been drafted based on the direction the city attorney's office has received. Again, subject to council's direction this evening.
I agree, but let's not, let's not continue to go down that road.
If there is something different, the council would like to see, frankly, this is the moment, so don't be shy.
We're not throwing darts. It's frustrating.
So thank you for giving that out and I hope that that brings some clarity. And to wrap up with that, you know, I'd like to bring up, I have told the city manager to express this when she's negotiating, from my perspective every time, is that Scientology has a 15-minute video of what they intend to do and what, what their buildings are. Come and share that at a work session. Like get the community on board and let them see what you intend to do. It's fantastic. It literally is. If, the follow-through is going to be there, which we can see the steps of them starting to activate certain portions of property that they own down here, in my opinion. I know that's not the shared view of everyone, but I think they're really missing a mark by not showing this video. So I would challenge them, I know they've got to be watching this. Please show your video, reach out and we'll get it on there so that the community as a whole can see what we can do together, right? So thank you all, thank you for the time.
Councilmember Dick Scherer.
Well, let me begin by saying that I don't perceive this to be the typical run-of-the-mill vacation request. It does not fall under the most common, which is vacating easements for utilities. It is not vacating an alley in a residential area, a corner lot in an open field or small strip of land in the middle of private property. What we're talking about is a public street, one of which I use every day. A public street that offers parking and revenue and generates revenue. And it also happens to be smack in the middle of our downtown. The privatization of this road goes against our very own downtown plan, which I believe our planning department can attest to. Now, over the last several years, I'm proud to say that the city leadership has initiated an aggressive and creative, multi-pronged revitalization plan that includes, but is not limited to,
You're right, it's just a cold compound, doesn't matter.
The award-winning Coachman Park, the development of the bluffs, which will add 400 new apartments, 158 key hotel, and a parking garage. We have recently sent an RFI for public, for a public-private partnership with an art institution to activate portion of the library. We will be adding to our small inventory of brick and mortar businesses with mobile vendors. We are collaborating with St. Pete College School of Business and Arts for student-based entrepreneurial initiative. And just one or two blocks east of this said road, we are building a municipal campus centered around our new city hall and next to that, the PSTA Intermobil Center. And last but certainly not least, we're working closely with the county to redevelop 14-plus properties. So in reference to one of the citizens, we've mentioned it before, in essence, we are building or rebuilding Rome and we're being asked to remove a road that leads to it. Now, having lived and worked in downtown for many years, I believe I have a grasp and true understanding of the challenges that our downtown has and continues to face. And it all boils down to balance or lack thereof. Our downtown is a disproportionate amount of institutional use, semi-private and restrictive use, vacant lots and vacant storefronts, as well as nonprofits. Balance is crucial in maintaining health in any entity, whether we're talking about the economy and the precarious position we might find ourselves
I don't know whose leader, you're talking about Sarah, I don't have a leader.
We've all witnessed how diminished numbers of a specific species can play havoc in the ecosystem
And again, what you're feeling is frustration.
And even the human body.
Not hate.
We have all felt the ill effects of when our body is out of balance. This is also true of a downtown. A vibrant downtown must have the right balance of residents, businesses, entertainment, services, and accessibility. The privatization of this road further exacerbates this imbalance. So this vacation request as it stands is not something that I can support. However, and this is what the discussions that I was conveying to the city manager, I would support it if it was accompanied with an activation agreement. At the very least, an initiative that would neutralize this further imbalance. I understand that the Church of Scientology needs this road to encapsulate their large project.
Me either, ma'am, I can't figure it out.
But our downtown needs activation. I don't believe the sale price of 1.3 million will move the needle. High impact, open access to all, activation does. For example, for over a decade, I've been hearing about a family entertainment center, whether it's a movie theater, bowling alley, or an amusement center. That would move the needle. That would enable both parties to walk away with something that they need.
Our main house.
Now, like any agreement that a government body enters into, it would have to be in writing. That is standard practice. All our agreements with various entities are in writing, like Amplify. In those agreements, we even include hours of operation. With Bay Care Sound, we include metrics such as number of events. We've even gone so far as to discuss restroom supplies. So to recap, I will not be supporting this vacation request as I feel that this exacerbates the imbalance we have.
Thank you, ma'am.
However, I will be open to it if it is in conjunction with a written activation agreement, which must include a high-impact and open-access initiative. Now, with all that aside, I'm still left with questions. And I have deep concerns about the negative impact on our maneuverability and access when all our initiatives finally come to fruition. Questions like, how will this impact the PSTA? The bus queues, the travel grid, the city hall? How will it impact our downtown when we have finally added all the residents, businesses, and visitors we are trying so hard to bring in? I simply do not believe this vacation request as it stands benefits Clearwater residents and visitors.
Next one, Marina.
Yay, good for you, clapping people. Super cool, no, he didn't show, he wasn't there.
Thank you all for being here. Greatly appreciate both sides giving us their thoughts, their perspectives on an important and a longstanding issue in our community. I understand some of you that showed frustrations. I'm born and raised in Clearwater as well. I share those same frustrations as, as you do regarding our downtown district and the 50 years plus of stagnation and finger-pointing, frankly, from all sides. Not to blame anyone. Are we content with stunted growth downtown? Our current downtown conditions or the path that we've traveled as a community to get here? The suggestion to never work with the largest property owner in our downtown district, the Church of Scientology, means that we are content and satisfied with the results that we currently have and live with. I'm not content with where we are. I'm not content with our downtown. And I know that there's many residents that are, some are with us tonight and many that are not, that are not content or satisfied with where we are in our downtown district. Our downtown waterfront district truly has the potential to be amazing. So many of us have said that, identified that. We've enjoyed weekends, dinners, concerts. We truly have a blank canvas of a downtown that not many cities can say. We cannot force anybody to develop a barren property. We cannot force anybody to develop and activate an empty building because there's those little things called constitutional property rights. Our hands are tied on so many fronts. We must be creative as a city and as leadership in finding ways to promote development downtown with the ultimate goal, which was just stated, activation. The activation of properties leading to a thriving and alive downtown that we can all be proud of, that we're, we're all begging for, for years. Some of us 40, 50 years begging for it, praying for it. We have the opportunity to turn that corner into Mid-Clearwater and Downtown Clearwater, a place that we are all proud to call our downtown district.
Very much so, sir.
This small vacated portion of roadway, it's not being stolen from you. It's not being given away for nothing. And it's not being given for free. It includes the best and highest-used average appraisal price, city attorney will tell me that that price is tentative, I'm sure he'd correct me, of 1.375 million dollars. That's countryside pickleball courts that we've talked about cutting in our budget discussions. That pays for the upgrades and expansions at Edgewater Park for the ADA compliant zones as well as the stormwater plan. That covers the cost of the Long Center's budget deletion of the instructional room in Sundec that we removed.
I apologize for swearing that's in my pants.
That was planned for the children, for the elderly, and everybody in between. But it's much more than the money. It's the contract assurances, it's the purchase contract assurances that is the meat on the bone in this deal. The vacated roadway doesn't transfer ownership until the issue of an occupancy license. The mandated development timeframe with strict payment penalties, if not finished, is an assurance that activation will happen. The guarantees of open and accessible green space for the public is vitally important to our downtown district as we continue to grow and put concrete walls up and around. This guarantees generational green space. What's been said in the purchase contract is the majority of this vacated roadway must remain green space. And the plan we've seen stretches all the way to Fort Harrison. That is a large, open, accessible green space for everybody in our community, not with four walls around it, like was mentioned and compared to another park. These purchase contract assurances, they're not backdoor handshakes. They're not prom- They're not promises that would have been broken in the past with a wink, wink, nod, nod, take my word for it. These are big-picture conditions that promote downtown development, ensure activation, add to Clearwater's tax revenues and economic impact, thank you for sharing that, and contribute to the economic vitality of our downtown district, our downtown merchants, and their businesses that they fight for daily. While I respect many of your doubts and frustrations with where we are in our downtown district and the reality of the brand that our downtown has, but I believe that this is truly a good business deal for not just the city of Clearwater, but for the tax-paying citizens of Clearwater. I continue to promise that every decision that I make on this dais will be in the best interests of the entirety of Clearwater and every resident. It will come to me through prayer and through our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
What? You didn't throw a prayer at the end of that.
First of all, I want to thank, I've got a little cold here, but I want to thank everybody that sent dozens of emails for and against, and all you that came out tonight for and against to voice your opinion of this particular item. You know, I've been involved with promoting Clearwater downtown longer probably than anybody on the dais up here. It's always been an uphill battle because of the presence of the Church of Scientology. Many of my constituents oppose the city collaborating with the church, even if it means sacrificing efforts to create a vibrant downtown. The city and the church both envision a downtown filled with restaurants and retail stores, but can we trust the church prioritize the public's best interest in making this a reality? The church believes it has taken the first step by investing millions in a plan to achieve this goal. Additionally, it has acquired numerous downtown land parcels to facilitate development, but collaboration with the city is essential to bringing this vision to fruition. The right-of-way vacation of this parcel is the first step in this collaboration. We either say yes and move forward toward a possible vibrant future for our downtown or no and continue the same path we've been on for 50 years. So I'm voting yes.
Okay. Save the best for last, I think. I appreciate, first I want to say, I appreciate the city manager and attorney working with five differing opinions on whether we should go through this or not, and it's been herding cats to a great extent, and I appreciate, not just your two efforts, but all of our city staff have been involved in helping us get to this point. Folks, you know, as many have already said, it's not been easy to navigate this relationship over 35 years, a lot of emotion for a lot of different reasons on it. For me, this is, it's not about a lot, the big picture in a lot of respects, it's simply about this, analyzing this as a real estate transaction. This whole transaction is being proposed by Scientology. It's not being proposed by any of us or the city. This is their idea. They have had these two lots for a long time, and they have had plans to develop an auditorium in one of these two lots for a long time and have not done it, but could have years ago. And they don't need the street closed to develop this auditorium and haven't needed to develop this auditorium. So this is something that's being proposed by them. I'm not entirely clear on why they want the street closed, why that makes a difference because, as was pointed out, we don't have a site plan to see how they're going to build it out. But for me, that's very important, that, as has been said by a number here today, for me, it's not about the price. It's about, it's about how the building's going to look. It's about if the city is going to give up the street, then what is the city getting in return? And are we getting enough in return?
Right on. Doesn't matter.
And knowing that they could have developed this auditorium without closing the street for a long time and have it. I'm willing, like in any real estate transaction, you want to buy a piece of real estate, they have no obligation to buy it, we have no obligation to sell it. But if you're interested in buying it, then make us an offer and then we counter. And we have. Five of us have wanted different things in return that we feel like can make it a win for the city to get those. And I believe the majority, maybe three of you, have what you think you need, but I don't. I don't have that. I have things other that I have asked for. I think the appearance of the building is very important to the future of downtown Clearwater. This building is on our gateway to Clearwater Beach. It's really a gateway to millions of visitors who've come here and maybe want to come back to downtown Clearwater. So to me, how the building appears, where it's situated, is very, very important, and I ask for some agreements on design, so on and so forth. We don't even have a site plan yet. One of the first drawings that's all was attached to this agenda item. So I think it's, the only way we would do this city, from my city, to give my vote, is to have in here, in an agreement, which I've still not seen yet, things that would value the city.
Which you women, exactly.
And those haven't been, what I hear are going to be in the agreement, but I think it's, Karen Cunningham came to the microphone earlier and said, you know, I don't think it's a good idea for us to piecemeal this. And I feel like, before we even know what is in the agreement, before we even have an agreement presented to us to consider, I feel like it's premature to vote to pass this ordinance without, particularly in my case, without feeling like there's going to be a written agreement, person's agreement, that I can vote for and support. So I think whatever we do there, again, if we're going, if we're going to help them develop their building by closing the street, we need to have something in it in return for the city, and a simple purchase price for me is just not enough. So I'm going to vote no on this agenda item.
Thank you, sir.
Because I just believe it's premature.
May not be enough, but thank you.
And what I'm hearing about agreement we would have, that the terms that I wanted in don't appear to be what's going to be landing in the final agreement. So, and again, we don't have a site plan for this. I just think we're doing way too much way too soon, and so I'll be voting no on this particular agenda. So with that as an ending of the discussion.
Sorry, I omitted a very important point. We were talking about the past and being on the same path and expecting different results. Actually, conveying of land has been the same path. That is our history. There's been many instances from 1984 as recent to December of 2021 where we have conveyed property.
Hey, Paula.
Through contract ordinance, which resulted in expanding their territory, and I don't know if anything has materialized where, over the years, where we could celebrate it. So we're not really changing anything by conveying another piece of property. We've done that repeatedly before, so I just wanted to clarify that. This is nothing new.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So this is why I think it's extremely important that Scientology shared the video that I'm pretty sure all of us as elected officials sat through, which was their pitch for you guys to see it too. We don't have a site plan yet, but they literally showed us what they intend on building, and it matches all of their downtown buildings. It is nothing taboo. And is it written in stone? No, but I do believe that all of us got a glimpse at what they intend on doing. Let me just tell you, if they switch it in the 11th hour from what was on their video to something extraordinary, you got me, yeah. You pulled the wool over my eyes, but I just don't think that that's going to happen, and that's why I implore them to come during council session and work session and show the video. Let everybody see it.
And again, I apologize for that word.
I am all for talking about this in the limelight, like one of the residents alluded to. I think the taboo of Scientology being in Clearwater needs to be a thing of the past. We shouldn't feel like we can't talk about it openly. It's just another people group that is within our hometown, and we should be able to openly talk about it without feeling awkward about it. So with that being said, again, I think with the church, it's really on them, hopefully sooner than later, to come and show everyone else what their plan is. So with seeing that video and being told this is our intention, that's good for me to know this is what they're going to be doing, not pulling something out from the magician's hat and taking us for another loop, so.
Right, doesn't matter.
As well as what we went over with the contract. Again, I'm surprised and happy that they signed those potential contracts, I should say, the potential contract, seeing as what happens tonight, so just wanted to say that as well.
Anybody else?
That is disgusting.
Something else?
Yeah.
I think this is, I think this is great. I think participatory governance is what our community needs. You can laugh if you want. This is healthy. This is what communities need to have open, honest, transparent dialogues on some of their biggest challenges that they face. We cannot, thank you for the respect, Mr. Bunker, it's appreciated. We cannot, as previous might have, hide behind a veil of secrecy.
We'll talk about it in a minute, Mr. Chicago.
And have our backdoor discussions that have gotten us the results that we have. That doesn't work anymore. I've said from the very first week that I was appointed and stepped into office, was elected, that we need to have these open dialogues in the public. We need to bring the public along with these processes if we truly want to change the narrative of our community, our downtown. This is part of that process. This is healthy. I commend, I love this group, I love each and every one of you.
Put it on for a month.
Us having disagreements is completely healthy. None of us ever want to sit up here and have the same thoughts with the same opinions, agreeing on everything as we roll through an agenda and hear somebody say unanimous, unanimous, unanimous. We don't want that every time, and I know we expect better of that. That makes us better as leaders, that makes our city better, we produce a better product for our visitors and for our businesses. So I'm with you. I think, I challenge the church myself as well, I think you're 100% on when you say that, is if we're truly going to be some sort of partnership in the success of our community in downtown, come to the table, come chat with us, engage our citizens, let's talk openly and honestly about our plans, about the directions we're going, so we can create the brand and the image of a Clearwater that we're all proud of, and I know we would all relish that opportunity. So I'm going to vote yes without a doubt on this, and I look forward to more public engagement going forward in the light.
Anybody else? City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just to kind of discuss procedurally where we're at and kind of what the options are for the council at this point. So there are two parallel processes taking place, one of which is the vacation ordinance, which is pending before you this evening. The other is the perks and sale agreement, which would be forthcoming. Both of those have to kind of work in tandem with each other, even though they're not on the same agenda tonight. That's true for Gotham, it's true for any other deal. The reason they don't come forward identically at the same time is because they have different advertising requirements. So the 30-day purchase and sale requirement arises under the Community Redevelopment Act. That's why the PSA is not on for tonight's agenda. However, the advertising requirements for the vacation ordinance are a bit different. But both of those will have to go together in the sense that either the council will ultimately vote to approve both a vacation ordinance and its accompanying purchase and sale agreement, or neither, because both of them are conditioned upon each other. So the body of the ordinance says that it will not go into effect unless and until the council approves a purchase and sale agreement. The reverse is also true. As drafted, the purchase and sale agreement says it does not go into effect unless and until the council approves the vacation ordinance. As far as next steps from here, the council has three options, in no particular order, I guess maybe in order of simplicity, but other than that, no preferential order. Option number one is to disapprove the ordinance, in which case, if it is disapproved, then I would assume the deal is dead. Option number two is for the council to approve the ordinance on first reading. If you vote to approve the ordinance this evening on first reading, then the ordinance will come back to you on second reading as well as a person's sale agreement at the March 31st daytime work session. At that time, if it's still on track, it will advance to the April 3rd council meeting, at which time council will have two agenda items, one of which would be the second reading of this ordinance, and the other would be the accompanying purchase and sale agreement. So in other words, voting to approve the ordinance tonight would keep that on track for an April 3rd final approval. And the third and final option is to continue this item to the April 3rd meeting. In other words, the council is not required to take action this evening on the first reading of the vacation ordinance. If the council prefers, a motion could be made to defer this action until the April 3rd meeting, which means the council will be voting on April 3rd as to the first reading of this ordinance as well as the purchase and sale agreement. And so that would mean, to the mayor's point, that both items would come together at a single council agenda item as opposed to council casting a vote tonight for the first reading only of the vacation ordinance. The end outcome of this is going to be only of the vacation ordinance. The end outcome of this is going to be the end outcome, but if the timing is a matter of concern for council, you definitely have the option to continue the meeting from tonight if you so choose. So those are your three options, either vote to approve, vote to disapprove, or vote to continue.
I think that would be your best.
Anything?
Mayor, may I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3 for the vacation of right-of-way in the purchase and sale agreement?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So that would be Councilmember Menino, Vice Mayor Albritton, and Councilmember Cotton voting yes, and the mayor and Councilmember Texan voting no. Thank you. Move to Item 6.4 on the agenda.
Done.
amended city's fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Promoting and enforcing fair housing.
Done deal. Okay, let's have a quick discussion before we round this up, because they voted for it, they're doing it. What is the prize, right? Okay, so I heard some frustration, and I heard some people are being vile, blah, 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 blah. Let's talk a little bit about that, because I heard frustration. Yes, because it would have been nice to have more people there, whether they knew about it or not, I don't know. I'm just going to give benefit of the doubt. Let's say everybody just heard about it last night, whatever. So some people couldn't be there. Mark Bunker, Wise Beard Man was there. Thank you, Wise Beard Man. Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. But the frustration is, is that this would have been really nice to know about, even though we weren't able to call in or zoom in, we could have been putting in our two cents this whole year through getting a hold of the council members, getting a hold of their staff, getting a hold of just comments on any of their work sessions, and that's the frustration. Rather than knowing about it at midnight last night, not having a damn thing to be able to do about it because everything had to be done by 5 o'clock yesterday, that's the frustration of it. So all we could do was sit here and watch and listen and just, just listen. So it might have been nice to have a few of the survivors there to maybe tell a different story, a different avenue of getting the story across, because this was last-ditch effort. That's the frustration that you hear. That's the vileness that you think. Yep, Helen, learn from this. This will, will happen in LA, because they're already starting it. They hired the biggest, baddest lawyer that they could. They hired Bill Delvecq. They've been doing this for a year, yes. So that's the frustration. So that's the frustration. The frustration's not around who's there, who's not there. The frustration is, is working as a team. We've been pumping LA, we've been pumping Salt Lake City, we've been pumping things, and things are changing, but if you don't know about something, it's hard, it's hard to help. Yep, this will be a fight in LA. Yeah, Adrian, maybe not, maybe not, and nobody else has said anything either. So, I mean, even Mark really hasn't said anything. Tony Ortega hasn't said anything. So it's not just all Aaron's issue. It's not just his fault for not saying anything. It's not. It's, it's the frustration. That truly, it's just the frustration. And to see that, you know damn well, they had, they had enough votes to make this go through. They had the handshakes ahead of time, because that's the way things are done. They don't go in willy-nilly, not knowing who's going to vote what. That doesn't happen on the council. You know, you know who's voting in what way. Exactly, doesn't matter. That's exactly the way, that's exactly the way they work, and that is exactly what they're doing in LA right now. Trivia at the top of the hour. I'm going to go do my old lady tinkle. It's 8 o'clock, I haven't even had supper yet, you guys. I do have snackies, though. I have snackies ready for my trivia night. So we'll see you guys in a little bit. I'm, I'm out of here. That freaking sucked, but we kind of knew that going in, right? Just a way to get the blood pumping. But yep, this is a warning to LA. Aaron pushed to get Mark votes for a reason, to get him back in there. Okay, good night, you guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll see you over on Summers' channel here in a little bit.